Okay, it's 6:02. I'm gonna call to order the committee of the whole for November 7th, 2019. Can we have a roll call please for attendance?
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Guerin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano? Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Here. We do have a quorum. With that, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Let's have Mr. Venetico introduce our guests.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. So tomorrow, Marlo gets to host one of our most memorable traditions, our annual Veterans Day breakfast and ceremony. Some of these students from the service club who are here with us tonight stayed after school for almost two and a half hours decorating. Every advisory in our school made decorations. And these students tomorrow will be greeting about 125 veterans and their guests, escorting them to their seats. And the most special thing is they get to walk around and serve them all breakfast. So we have our, some members of our service club here tonight to do the pledge. I'll let them introduce themselves.
I am Kayden and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Frank Rorero and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Juliana Sindalar and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Carson Copperzman and I'm in sixth grade.
A public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as thou.
The microphones are gonna be on. Speak into them. Use the normal tone of voice. Parents, please come up, take all the pictures you would like. Thanks again for leading us in the pledge. For the people that are in the audience, I met you guys in the hallway while Mr. Venetico was telling you what we do and he said I would ask you some questions. And I did tell you it'd be a pop quiz on math and science, right? Have you ready?
Oh geez. Nope.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, are you all in sixth grade? Is that right?
Yeah.
Very good. And you had joined the service clubs? Okay?
Yeah.
Just going down the line, what made you want to join the service club?
I just like helping people.
Okay.
I wanted to do something school-related and I, well, I like helping.
Very good.
I wanted to follow my grandpa's footsteps.
What did your grandpa do?
He did a lot for his community in Elgin and so I decided that I could follow his footsteps after he passed away.
Oh, that's very nice.
I just like to help people a lot. Like, I just like to do things, good things for people, a lot, so.
Very good. And what are some of the other service things that you've gotten to do so far this year?
I helped out my fourth and third grade teacher in her classroom.
Nice.
We set up fundraisers to like, support the Ronald McDonald House, collecting pop tabs.
Oh wow, okay.
Yeah, collecting pop tabs, pretty much.
Alright.
We cleaned up Halagus Street.
Oh, Halagus? Was that a lot of work?
Yeah.
Okay, was it fun?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And are you guys all ready for tomorrow to host the Veterans Day celebration?
Yeah.
How long did it take you guys to do all that work?
A while.
A while?
Pretty long time.
Very good. We're gonna come up behind you and get some pictures taken, okay? So stay right there.
I choose this one. I don't know if I can see where I stand.
Yeah, you might wanna, you're gonna be blocked by them.
It's okay, thanks.
You can stand if you'd like. Or on your knees.
I'm good.
Oh, you're good.
Yeah, I'm not that short.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
I'll see you guys tomorrow morning.
See you tomorrow morning.
Thanks for working hard with the service club. Alright. Appreciate it. Okay. Next item on the agenda is we have some student recognition and I think we got somebody from Heinemann, is that right? Mr. Litchfield is coming up.
Good evening, thank you for having us. With me tonight, I have seventh grader Tommy Nitz. Tommy was a cross-country runner for Heinemann this season and he is a definite team leader. I spoke to his coach multiple times about the leadership qualities that she was looking for from Tommy and he definitely stepped up into that role. Throughout the season, he won four regular season meets and was around an 11-minute, 30-second average for two miles. And he, his worst time through the season was 12:10, but his average was 11:30 and he kept chipping away at that time and improving throughout the season. He got sixth in the conference and third in sectionals. When he represented us downstate, he got his best time of the season, 10 minutes and 55 seconds for 14th place in class 3A sectional, or 3A state for cross-country. Congratulations, Tommy.
There you go, one more. Shake your hand. Yeah, come on up, you're up. Yeah, come on up, you're up. Alright, next item, public comment. Mr. Armstrong, is there any public comment?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, then we'll move on to revision and adoption of the agenda. Looking at the agenda, it looks like we have something in every section. We don't have anything under legislative. Oh, you do. Okay, then we'll keep legislative on there. And is there anybody that wants anything revised or adopted on the agenda? If not, then I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Guerin. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Guerin.
Thank you very much. Going to 6 dot 1, Contract for Equity Action Coalition Facilitation, Dr. Del Castillo.
Thank you. As you know, we started our equity work last year with a need assessment. At the end of the need assessment, we delivered a board report on recommendations for 2019. One of the first recommendations in the need assessment was to start a equity-guided coalition. We have Assembly and Action Coalition and have our first meeting yesterday. The first meeting was extremely successful in setting the stage for a productive equity work. In order to engage in this process, we are recommending that we engage in consulting the services of Dr. Phyllis Hayes. Dr. Hayes comes with a wealth of experience in equity and diversity work as a leader at the University of Illinois at Chicago. And we are recommending that we contract with Dr. Hayes for a limited term consisting of facilitation, support for the action coalition. The cost of the contract will be $9,000 and will be covered via grant funds. We're asking that the curriculum committee move the contract forward for approval by the full board. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Did you say that there's grant funds?
Yes, that will be covered with grant funds.
Any other questions?
Well, then I recommend we move that forward to the next board meeting. 6 dot 2, Huntley High School Course Proposals for 2020-2021, Dr. Schlichter.
Thank you very much. So it's that time of year when we look at our course proposals for next year. This is always the fun one where we look at the proposals and feel like we want to be in the classes. And so when we look at those, you'll see some pretty exciting things. They really fall just into several categories and so, as we have been doing for really the last five or six years, we're building out some of our academies. And so the first chunk of courses that you see in the packet are English 4, Literature for Fine Arts aligns with our Fine Arts Academy, AP Art Studio aligns with our Fine Arts Academy, looking at a capstone class. Advanced Dance, which I think has been a long time coming, it's something that we've really talked about and advocated for for a very long time. That's gonna be sitting in PE, but will also align with our Fine Arts Academy, which we're extremely excited about. And then we're looking at our global capstone class. So as our students are progressing through the Global Academy, we're arriving to that point where they're getting to the capstone level. So that class is included as well. And then we've also got some courses, as you see, that are aligned with our CTE pathways. And so when we proposed a concept to the board saying we want to build out different areas of CTE engineering, manufacturing, perhaps automotive, different types of robotics, and so you see some classes in there. We do have the second level of the business incubator called Accelerator EDU. It will be small, with only several students. The prerequisite for that is that the students had to have gone through business incubator and been funded at a certain level for their actual business. And so that's a small group of kids that will go to that second level and we'd like to offer that capstone. Then we also see some Culinary Arts II classes, looking at turning that into a dual-credit class. That's a theme we're gonna be hearing about more in the next few years, which is that we're really working, I'd say, very proactively with MCC, but also Harper College and some other community colleges to try to get as much dual credit for our students, especially in our CTE courses, as we can. We are looking at adding and proposing an education pre-internship class. So that education pathway is one that is very important to us, obviously. We would love to see our students get trained in education, come back and contribute to Huntley. And so we feel strongly about building that piece out and we obviously have a perfect little incubator to teach kids how to educate other kids, right? Because we've got a lot of schools of all levels. And then we have our fashion dual-credit classes. And so looking at shifting those, adding the second level and shifting those to dual credit. So again, in the CTE world, we're building out the areas, we're looking at down the road, making sure that we have classes in place, that when the state continues its college and career readiness indicators, we have more options for students to be able to meet those. And so adding those courses will assist with that. And then last of all, we have, in the CTE area, we have two that are actually very exciting, a networking class, which is in computer science, so in that area. Robotics and drones is one that actually has gathered a lot of interest even outside of our district. We are looking at that one and I just want to make a note, there is a fairly hefty startup cost for that, for equipment. And our co-op, so the county that works with us for CTE, they will be covering the cost of startup for that. So they're going to be able to get us funds through their federal grant for that purpose. So that's something that we felt strongly about because that was one that was a little bit iffy for us if we hadn't been able to get that funding. And then last of all, we have several options for advanced coursework that we would like to add. Intermediate Algebra, Transitional Math, that's a class we actually already have. We had to make a few tweaks to it because there is a state law now that we do need to have a transitional math class that meets certain requirements. So we just made a few changes to that and we're shifting the name and we're placing that in the course catalog as a recommendation. And last of all, Spanish for Spanish Speakers 3. So as we're building out our Spanish for native Spanish speakers sequence, we are looking at adding that third level class. It's interesting to think about the fact that a student that comes in as a native Spanish speaker in Spanish for Spanish Speakers 1 is a student that may actually even speak Spanish better than a teacher, right? They could actually go take the AP Language test and score a passing score on it, but that still means that they need to study literature and they need to be able to progress in the study of their native language. So we have those sort of three areas of focus for the new courses, the academies, the CTE areas, as well as these advanced courses. All of them have been vetted by department chair, high school administration, curriculum department, cabinet, back to the high school administration, and a really rigorous process. We do have money in the budget that we are able to allocate projected for next year to make sure that we can get those classes up and running. And Mr. Bealan's already working with his department chairs on staffing plans for those. So we've looked really at all those aspects. The last piece I'll mention about the new courses is just that over the last few years, as the high school's been growing pretty quickly, it's a pretty easy call to add new courses. Because we have lots of new students, there's always gonna be enough kids to take classes. That's another component that we're looking at and just a criteria that we ask our department chairs to think about is, if we're adding a lot of courses and we don't have a lot of new students, what does that mean for our existing courses? So the high school administration is looking at the potential of studying, maybe some courses need to not come off the books, but run every other year. It's a pretty common solution to say, we want to be able to continue to offer very robust offerings, but not necessarily have a lot of classes that don't run. And so definitely some solutions for that, but we just want to let the board know that in this process, we do have that in mind as well. So that is a summary of our courses that we're looking at proposing and that would be requested to be carried forward for approval at our board meeting here in November next week. And with that, we'll take any questions. And Mr. Bealan's here as well, he can answer any specific questions as well.
Questions?
Just a quick one on, you kinda stole my first question, so. But to follow up on that is, like, prior year, if you look back a year ago, two years ago at the same time, how have all those new courses that have been rolled out been accepted? Have any kinda died on the vine or, just your thoughts on that in general?
And so I don't want to overspeak in general. We have occasionally, we'll have a class, sometimes like a semester elective, that might not run every semester. There have not been any that have died on the vine, where they've just died and not come back. Occasionally, we'll have a semester where maybe one of like the specialized medical academy elective classes just doesn't quite get enough kids, so they run it the next semester instead. It is definitely something that we monitor though, because when we look at students giving course requests, kind of a worst-case scenario is you get just kind of not quite enough requests in lots of courses, then you can't run any of them and you have to go back and say, okay, what's everybody's second choice? And so we want to make sure we're kind of streamlining that. I think we've taken a much more careful approach to it in the last couple of years, knowing this is coming. Before that, we were able to just add, because there was lots of kids. Yeah.
Other questions?
As far as switching to an alternating year pattern, is there going to be an advanced notice given to students so that, I know there are a lot of kids plan out their coursework a couple of years in advance, so that they're aware that something may or may not be offered accordingly?
Yeah, that would be something typically in schools that move to that would be phased in with advanced notice as they're making their four-year plans. It actually helps because they're able to predict. So right now, a student might be counting on taking a class, but if it doesn't run, it doesn't run and they just have to go someplace else. But if we're able to be a little bit more strategic and let them know in advance, it does give them a little bit less flexibility, perhaps. But you know, we've talked about that every time we propose the classes, there's a more choice we have.
Sure.
You gotta choose and so sometimes they can't take everything they want. But our goal is to continue to offer this robust course offering, not to draw back on the opportunity, but just to slim it down a little if we need to, to try to keep offering what we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm looking at facility needs for the computer class and you talked, the startup cost would be covered. And there's a little note in here that we may need to update the second computer lab. Would that cost then be covered or by the?
Mr. Bealan, do you have a, you want to speak to that for the facilities side at the high school?
Hey, good evening. We talked with our tech department and our computers are on a cycle. Our computer labs are one that are, they're on a five-year cycle, all of them, correct, yes. And this one, we would look at, as we were cycling those out, to find out what were the specific needs. We currently have courses that are in there that are utilizing those computers in computer science and just really seeing what those needs are for networking. We're not doing any heavy-duty like server building and things of that nature at this point, but really looking at what that replacement cycle would be and what computers are needed for that, so.
Any other questions? No, thank you very much. Thank you. I would recommend we move that forward to the next board meeting. Is it good with that? Okay, then we move on to 6 dot 3, the Revised Five-Year International Travel Plan, Dr. Schlichter.
Yeah, this is another one of those exciting things when we look at it and think that we want to participate. One of the strategic pieces about how we structured these next two items is, we're gonna be looking at a proposal for a revised travel plan and then an additional trip. And so the revised plan explains the additional trip. Essentially, when we look at the fact that we've added the Global Academy, one of the pieces that's really come forward from Mr. Ane, who's been looking, and Mrs. Sharkey, who's working with the academy, is that we didn't necessarily have in our current long year, or five-year plan, the rotation for our Global Leadership Summits occurring every year. We didn't have it written in there, we sort of had it as a proposed, we think this is gonna happen. So we wanted to just in full transparency, bless you, full transparency, update the board to make sure we would have approval to add those in, so that each time they come, it would just be part of our routine with our travel plan. The second change that this reflects, and actually we're gonna see it this year, is our prior rotation for the China trip had been every four years. And what we realized is that if it's every four years, there's generally one class of students that doesn't really get the opportunity to go unless they go before freshman year or after senior year. So, just doing a math adjustment, it'd be a one-time adjustment. We wanted to bump that next China trip up by one year to move it to a three-year rotation. So that China trip is actually our next item, but we wanted to get some feedback on the Revised Five-Year Travel Plan that actually reflects that before we brought that trip to you. So, the plan is attached and it goes through the sequence. Generally, it's a little bit less specific as we get out further, sometimes we lack information about the exact details of where the global summits are, but we, you can sort of see the pattern cycling through. So this would be for approval at the next board meeting, if we move it forward. So with that, we'll take any questions. And Mr. Ane is here as well, if we have specific questions for him.
Any questions on the five-year plan?
I just want to confirm, the cost for this, that's all paid for by parents?
It's paid for, yeah, in fundraising, but absolutely for families and for the community, yep.
There are no school district?
No.
No, no school district cost, or, we do not pay it for a dime.
No, I am personally.
Ms. Trainee, you want to talk about, if you, answer any of these questions? Yes, our high school staff chaperones all the trip.
Right, but do they cover their own costs under travel or is that?
Alright, in terms of chaperones, we've always used high school teachers first. And then what we do is we go from high school teachers to middle school teachers, which we've never gotten to. And then we would take elementary teachers and so forth, so, that's the shit.
The question was about the cost of the staff chaperone?
Oh, the cost of the staff chaperones, they have to pay for the insurance, they have to pay for all of the
Sometimes we lack information about the exact details of where the global summits are, but we, you can sort of see the pattern cycling through. So this would be for approval at the next board meeting if we move it forward. So with that, we'll take any questions. And Mr. Ane is here as well, if we have specific questions for him.
Any questions on the five-year plan?
I just want to confirm the cost for this. That's all paid for by parents?
It's paid for, yeah, in fundraising, but absolutely for families and for the community, yep.
There are no school district?
No.
No, no school district cost, or we do not pay it for a dime, that's not?
No, I am personally.
Ms. Ane, you want to talk about if you, answer any of these questions? Yes, our high school staff chaperones all the trip.
Right, but do they cover their own costs under travel or is that?
All right, in terms of chaperones, we've always used high school teachers first. And then what we do is we go from high school teachers to middle school teachers, which we've never gotten to, and then we would take elementary teachers and so forth, so that's.
The question was about the cost of the staff chaperone.
Oh, the cost of the staff chaperones, they have to pay for the insurance. They have to pay for all of the expenses that the kids have prior. So that would be the charter bus, the tipping, all of that stuff. So it ends up being about three to $500 for the chaperones. Any other questions I can answer? We currently, right now, for our Rome and Athens trip that we are leaving for in this upcoming spring break, we have 71, so we have two full buses. And right now, for the Peru trip that we have in 2021, we started it recruiting earlier than we ever have, so we currently have 12, so.
Do you see overlaps of kids that do multiple?
Yeah, we actually, in this last graduating class, we had two girls that had gone on five of the trips. So we have multiple, even on the Rome and Athens trip, we have, I think, 12 to 13 kids that have been on a previous trip before that.
And one more, and I noticed that you have these trips come toward the end of the year. Is there any concern about overlap with summer trips?
No, in fact, if you look at the summer trips, they're a different experience than what the spring break trips are. The spring break trips are more about learning and going to see these different sites and learning about the cultures. The summer trips are actually the, where you have a global leadership summit where you work with multiple students from around the world in order to do some type of a theme or you're trying to fix a common problem. That's why it works so well with the Global Academy. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, I recommend we move that forward to the next meeting and move on to five, or I'm sorry, six dot four, the HHS international trip to China. Dr. Schlichter.
And so this is, like I said, strategic that it was right after that. This particular trip was not reflected for summer 2021 in our last plan. It is in this new plan that you have under consideration, and that just reflects moving it up one summer so that we could speed up that rotation to get all of our students that opportunity. So the trip is attached. And again, Mr. Ane is here if we have any questions, but this would also be for approval at our next meeting.
Questions? Anybody? Nope, that's going to be an easy one then. Recommend we move that forward to the next meeting. And six dot five, summer school 2020. Dr. Schlichter.
So this, I feel like we keep bringing summer school earlier and earlier in the year. I think a few years ago, it was February or even March. One of the things that we are trying to do with summer school is actually take a little bit of a long-range visioning approach to it. So we do have a review underway, not for this coming summer, but a longer sort of visionary review of our programming and how it meets kids' needs for a little bit further out, so stay tuned for more on that. This particular document looks probably fairly familiar. We're looking at just finalizing our dates for next summer. One thing I want to point out though is the reason we're doing it this early is actually in response to parent feedback and student feedback. They asked us in a very reasonable request, actually, that nobody had thought of, which was, you know, could we please know if we're in summer school before we have to register for our regular classes? Because then we would know what to register for. And we thought, well, that's extremely reasonable. It makes a lot of sense. So we talked to Mr. Kemp, and he could not be here tonight, but we worked with him on just simply bumping up the registration. So he's going to be doing that registration here, assuming that we don't have any concerns with the plan. He'll be doing that registration for the high school courses, those enrichment courses, prior to break. So that will be coming out early. That'll feel like a big change, but it's essentially just taking the same process and moving it up for next summer. So most of the particulars that you see here are pretty similar to last summer. For every program except our extended school year program, we are looking at a three-week first session in order to avoid that Fourth of July week. For our extended school year program, this was very intentional. Mrs. Wan and Mr. Wolf actually surveyed our special education parents to ask their opinions, and we really felt that that compressed timeline, five days a week for three weeks, did not serve our students with special needs as well as the longer the four weeks, even if it was a little bit with the Fridays off and it went a little bit into Fourth of July. They really felt strongly about that additional fourth week, and that actually does follow our structure from last year for ESY. But other than that, it's a similar structure for our programs. These would continue through this summer, maybe with some minor tweaks as we look at some of the larger pieces to perhaps bring forward for discussion in a larger review for the following summer. So this is actually not an approval item, but we definitely would like some discussion, and we're happy to answer any questions. And then our next step would be to work with Mr. Kemp to go forward with registration. So with that, we'll take any questions.
Are they going to offer the same programs at the high school that they usually do over the summer? Or is there ever a time when we might add some different classes for the high school?
Yeah, that's actually going to be a part of that sort of larger review. But what I will say is there have been some classes that run a little bit differently each summer. Generally, it's those required classes. It's those same ones. And so I would anticipate that this summer, those would be our staples. I think some summers, actually, they've said, well, let's see if we can run an art class, and if it fills, it fills. That's great. We do have trouble filling some of those elective classes. Something else that we are going to need to be looking at is that as we are moving towards more inquiry-based curriculum, it doesn't really lend itself to compressing a semester into three weeks because you really don't have time for inquiry, even if the hours are there in a day. So we're looking at some of those structures. Probably wouldn't be that visible or feel that different, but generally, for this coming summer, it's likely going to be similar courses to what we've had in the past.
Other questions? No? All right, and we move to six dot six, the Illinois School Report Card Update. Dr. Schlichter.
This is a very long attachment, and this actually is something that we've previewed in some of our prior discussions. On October 30th, exciting, we, the school report cards were released publicly. Illinois Report Card is the website, and it's referenced in the memo that anybody can go to and really dig into just a wealth of data about the school district. There is in school code, a regulation stating that we need to publicly present and then post on our website, the PDFs of our school report cards. So this particular discussion serves that purpose. But what I will tell you is that these PDFs, these sort of at-a-glance documents that are attached, really only scratch the surface, and they're very much designed by the state to be viewed online. So I would definitely encourage anybody who wants to dig in. The tools are becoming way more interactive every year, and they're adding lots and lots of data points every year, as we know, because we have to report on those. So it's great for families and communities. They can really dig in and find some interesting things. This is just an information item, and we will be posting these on our website and our school websites per state law. But we will take any questions.
Was there anything that jumped off the page when you, when you got these?
Well, we were happy about our designations. We talked about that, and we're going to be looking at that a little bit in our next item. In terms of jumping off the page, there's nothing that jumps off the page as a huge surprise. What I will say in general is that changes in the assessment systems are a challenge. So the SAT is three years old. Three years technically makes a trend, but it also doesn't really give you enough of a trend to allow for differences in groups of kids. So if you had two groups of kids that were a little bit up and down coming through taking that test, we can't really always predict where we're going to land, so we definitely want more years on the SAT. At grades three through eight, they replaced the PARC test with the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. And so PARC became IAR. It's a different test, lots of similar questions. The state is reporting it out as one data progression, so they didn't start over and only give us one year. You'll see it attached as a yearly progression. It's a different test, though. So it's just a little bit tough for us sometimes to drill in. What I will say is that in our school improvement plans and the school buildings, our principals have done a fantastic job of drilling into the areas, really looking at the items. What areas did our students need attention in? Were there trends that we saw, and can we target those by grade levels or looking at those pieces? So for us, this data, I think, in these school report cards, is interesting. Sometimes it affirms what we know, that we're high-achieving compared to the state, and we're glad of that. But it also gives us areas to improve, and that's really for us the most important part because no matter how good we are, we want to make sure that we're focusing on improving.
I just have a quick question on the fast facts. Under, with disabilities, there's not, there's no percentage. Is that because we have such a low percentage, or why is that? I'm looking at the fast facts on the.
Yeah, let me take a look.
At the glance. And then also, the IEPs, does that include 504s too, or is that just IEP?
So the children with disabilities is 504 in IEPs, and they're still also reporting IEPs separately, so it's two different groups.
So then with disabilities should have a percentage?
Should have, yeah, it should have. And we can look at why they didn't put that in there, and I can look and see if it's at the district level or the building levels.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and we will move to six dot seven, telling our story. Data picture in Huntley District 158. Dr. Schlichter.
Thank you very much, and I will get myself projecting here. So you may recall that at the point that we had our data available last year, we had a data presentation from Dr. McCrindall, and we really, I think for the first time since I've been in the district at least, we really looked at sort of a deeper dive into data. So instead of just saying, hey, how's our ACT score, or in general, how are we doing? We really presented publicly on some specifics. And so this year, we've kind of reached a happy medium, I think. That's a very in-depth look, and I think we definitely have some community members and some members of our staff and perhaps board members that would want to be able to dive in on some of those charts. But what we decided to do instead was to take more of a dashboard approach. And so at your tables, you have, and it will be posted in Board Book, it's actually, I printed it as a packet, and there's some links when you look at it online. But essentially, we've looked at putting together a dashboard. So some general pieces and then also by level. So just to kind of walk through, and I'm really just going to highlight a couple of things about what you're looking at. As this comes up, I'm just going to be scrolling through the PDF to kind of draw our eyes to it, but we do have the hard copies if we need to look at those. So as we start, the belief statements that are at the top of the PDF, we actually, you know, our strategic plan is a living document. Those are the belief statements that actually were generated from our prior strategic plan. And when you look at that, that set of belief statements, that really tells us what we care about in the district. We care about improving instruction by using our assessments. We care about achieving high results for kids. We care about rigorous programming. And so we just wanted to put those at the top there because for us, because for us, those are the things that drive what we do. Have a little reminder of our state designations there on the front page of the dashboard as well, and we do know that all of our schools, we're very proud, are either commendable or exemplary. Legia is exemplary for the second year in a row, which is a great celebration. And McHaven moved into that exemplary column, which is absolutely fantastic. And then we also, thank you, Dr. Buzinski. On that front page, we also just have a summary of assessments that we use. And the reason that I put this on here for our community as we post this and present it publicly is that we've just got a lot of tests that we hear tossed around, names, what are they for? And I just wanted to point out that they do fall generally into two categories. So state accountability or external tests, those are essentially tests that we take because somebody else designs them and we need to take them, and we get good data and we use them. That's the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, the SAT, the Illinois Science Assessment, the access test for our English learners, and the dynamic learning maps, which some of our special education students take. So those are the tests or the categories of tests that we take, and those are what drive some of the achievement results that you see. So if you flip through the packet, and again, if it comes back up, I'll scroll, but otherwise, we'll just direct to the paper. Basically, what I did for each of our areas, so for elementary, middle, and high school, is I just pulled out a set of observations about our data. Not every chart that supports every statement there is going to be reflected in the packet because this is really designed to be more of an overview. I do attach to the electronic version of this a link to that gigantic in-depth presentation. So if anybody would like to drill back and see kind of, okay, where did that come from? Where did that come from? I am more than happy to sit and go through that with anybody that would like to do that. So for our elementary achievement, some of the pieces that we find as highlights is when we look at early literacy, our AIMS web assessment. It's a fall, winter, and spring assessment. It's really useful to us to show growth, and what we see very, very dependably on that is that in language arts and in math, we do see greater-than-expected growth in all of our grade levels. I included it just for K2 because those are the only assessments really that we have in K2. That Illinois Assessment of Readiness starts in grade three for the state. So we wanted to make sure that we had some grade-two data reflected there. And then what you'll see is just a summary of grades three through five. The data's combined. We definitely have it broken out by grade level, but we don't necessarily need to run through every chart here tonight. It's linked into the presentation. But when we look at third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, you just see there a snapshot of the achievement levels for those grades. We will say that in grade three, we have some areas that we want to attend to. So when we look over time in grade three, what we've seen is that slightly more students are moving into the partially met category, that yellow category. And so drilling down through our school improvement plans, we want to make sure that we're attending to that. And we're just going to point out, it's important to look honestly at the areas of improvement as well as celebration. In grades four and five, we have very significant or very consistent performance in English language arts, and that's good to see. It's high performance. It far outpaces the state, and we're happy that it's consistent, again, continuing to look for improvement. And in grade four in math, we've actually seen very considerable improvement over the last four years. And so as we start, as we look at our data, what we look at is the snapshot. We compare it to the state, and we look over time because we want to see those trajectories going in the right direction. And then just a sort of a general statement, the IAR, that Illinois Assessment of Readiness, formerly PARC, it's given in grades three through eight. So a snapshot that we just like to look at is just to say, we are outpacing the state very significantly, and it's good to see that snapshot. And so just to continue to make that statement, we focus on improvement, but we also know that we're a high-achieving district, and we can celebrate it at the same time as we think of getting better. And that's where we outpace the state. So you see the red rectangle around our Huntley scores and the state of Illinois, and very, very dependably across all grade levels, we see that result. If you flip to middle school. Should we not move it? Okay. If we look at middle school, we do see again that we outperform the state. It's pretty straightforward across the board. And again, you see a snapshot of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So some of the pieces that we find, just our general conclusions, is that in sixth-grade math, we actually do see a trend line that we need to dig into. So what we've seen, and we need to look at alignment, we need to look at materials, we need to look at instruction, because just like in third grade, you sometimes find those points where you say this is an area that needs further analysis. And so sixth-grade math is one of those areas of focus for us. In seventh-grade math, however, it improves over time very consistently. So when we look at our grade levels, what we're constantly trying to do is to just figure out, why is that happening? So it could be the same students, they go into seventh grade. What is it about the curriculum? What is it different about the standards? How it's designed that causes that result to occur? And then in eighth-grade math, achievement is consistent. In eighth-grade English language arts, students are really showing a positive trend. And so what you see here are math and language arts snapshots. Like I said, sixth grade is an area of focus. Seventh-grade language arts, I would say over time, and also in the snapshot, that's on the right-hand column there in the middle, is really one of our areas of celebration. Our seventh-grade staff and our curriculum work has really focused on some of those standards. One thing I will say that's been interesting over the last few years, so when the new Illinois standards, based on the Common Core, were adopted, the biggest changes in the standards tended to be at fourth grade and seventh grade. So any school district in the state. So any school district in the state, when those changes were made, districts found those two grade levels just bobbling a little bit. And so we've put a lot of resources into that fourth and seventh grade structure. And it's great to see that it's having results, and now we need to make sure that we branch out from there. And then if we turn to high school, some of our just general observations are that we, again, significantly perform, outperform students across the state of Illinois. We do have, and you don't see it reflected here, is we do have a trend line that we need to attend to. And what I said before about having only three years makes it a little tough, but it is a trend. And so even within the differences between different kids, we want to make sure that in our Language Arts and in our math, that that SAT trend line is going the right way. So we're working with department chairs to really dig in on which questions, which areas of focus need attention for that. Something that's just interesting, and you don't necessarily see a chart for this, and it's actually never really been explained to our satisfaction. There's a lot of advocacy at the state level around this, is that the state of Illinois chose to create their own performance levels for the SAT. It's, it's a nationwide test, and the College Board, which is linked to actual college readiness, they have their own research-based performance levels. And the state of Illinois is are way higher and harder to reach. And so we've basically said, so the College Board, which designed the test, says, this is what it looks like, and here's the point you have to reach to be college-ready. And Illinois took that point and moved it way up. And they really have not been able to provide us with research that supports that. Through some of our groups, LUDA, through our CADCA Chicago area groups, they, it's just the way it is. They felt they needed to do that for federal accountability. But it is, it is something where when parents get their reports home, they'll see here a state of Illinois result, they'll see something different coming home from SAT, and it generally, generally looks a lot more positive. So it's a little bit of a disconnect. It's unfortunate. But I just wanted to point that out because it's just one of those vagaries of the state. Then the other piece that we wanted to begin to include is some data points that aren't just test-based. Because what we know is that students take the SAT, students have classes, they get grades in classes. Graduation rate's important. You need to graduate from high school. And even more important is post-secondary enrollment. And that's two or four-year degree. So not just a four-year college, but some kind of training after high school. And I think we definitely see some huge celebrations in our post-secondary enrollment. It's high. It's, it's up there with the rest of the state. And that is something that's a celebration. And the last section that we wanted to include, and again, lot, lot more information to dig down in the actual presentation if anybody would like to, is a focus on our special populations. And what I will say about this is that we've never actually before, outside of our strategic plan targets, we've never before actually dug in on our special populations specifically to pull them to the forefront with the beginning of our equity work that Dr. Del Castillo talked about, as well as just with what we know is right. We want to make sure that we're shining a spotlight on some of those areas because those are the things that need attention. And so some of the observations that we would make, I do believe that it's important to note that we have gaps, as do all school districts in all of their subgroups. The thing that's a celebration, not to rest on, but it is a celebration, and it's something we should be proud of, I believe, is that our gaps are extremely small compared to the state. So when you look at the two gaps, our district is the light green, and the state is the blue. And in some of our areas, especially our demographic areas, some of our ethnic and racial demographic areas, we are serving our students at a much higher rate than the state is in terms of their results in those gaps. So again, something to be proud of, but also something that we still need continued focus on. We would anticipate that we would be digging into those and seeing what kinds of goal setting we need for the future. And then the last two sections that I included in the dashboard are actually a little bit more detailed information about the two subgroups that we've currently got in our strategic plan as targeted subgroups. So those are students with IEPs and English learners. And so specifically first, looking at our students with IEPs, what I will say, like before, is that we outperform students across the state. That is not good enough for us. When we look at achievement, so in math is that, that first chart there, it's consistent. It, it bobbles around a little bit, but that green and that blue, we want to see significantly higher. So we would anticipate that that would continue to be an area of focus. I think we know that Dr. Del Castillo and her team are working with DM Group. We're looking at a review. As a district, we're really putting a lot of resources into how do we improve that system for our students. And so we are going to expect that, that those, those results improve. And when we look at our English Language Student Achievement, we actually see some very strong celebrations here. So if you scroll down just a little bit. So on the left, we have our math results over time. So for the past four years for our English learners. And on the right, we have our English Language Arts. And the huge celebration that we see are those trend lines as you look how it marches down the page like that. We have significant numbers of students who are English learners moving into the higher ranges of achievement. And that is to be expected for me because we've got such robust programming. The board supported our dual-language programming. We really have put in place a lot of robust support for our English learners in other ways as well, push-in services. And it is, it is absolutely a celebration to see that coming to fruition and seeing those students achieving. One note is that the two subgroups that I've spotlighted here that are currently in our strategic plan noted are the only two subgroups that a student is in them only as long as they have a learning challenge. So for our English learners, they don't have a learning disability, but they have a language challenge. And so as soon as they master the English language to the performance on the access test, they actually exit the program. So they're no longer English learners once the language challenge goes away. And our students with disabilities have been identified with specific learning disabilities or other disabilities that impact performance. And so they do definitely need additional support and additional focus. And I think our results tell us that as well. So with that sort of overall snapshot of data, just running through quickly some general observations and knowing that there's just so much data behind all of this at the building level and certainly at the classroom level, what teachers will be digging into on a daily basis to target instruction for their students runs way beyond what we would ever want to look at publicly or in a board setting or a strategic plan setting. But for tonight, what we wanted to do is just in a dashboard setting, give an overview of some of our achievement from last year and some of those observations. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions, discussion, or alternatively, if anybody needs some time to look, want to click on the detailed presentation of a million slides and go through it and look, happy to talk at a later time as well with any member of the community who wants to dig in a little bit. So with any questions?
Questions, anyone?
More of a comment. Excellent presentation. I really liked the dashboard setups of this. I was kind of sitting on the ISB site, and as we were going through the dashboard, I was able to drill down and look at some of the details. You're right, there is a lot here. This is like the tip of the iceberg in terms of just a whole mountain of stuff. Sorry to mix metaphors, but a whole mountain of, of information to really get into here. And as we go forward year after year, we'll be able to draw some comparisons and follow a class, third, fourth, fifth grade in much, much better detail. So very nice.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. Great work. And I will move to Human Resources, Mr. Gentry.
Okay. Sole agenda item for Human Resources is seven dot one, Human Resource Updates. Mr. Zier.
So just a quick update for the board. I want to make you aware that currently the district is in open enrollment for health benefits for 2020. We opened that up on Monday of this week. So that process is going very smooth as folks go to choose their health insurance plans and some other voluntary plans that we've added to the benefits. So we'll have some data when we come back to let everyone know how many folks have chosen to go with the health insurance in the district. Also, a quick update, our wellness screenings wrapped up last week. We had 402 employees participate in the wellness screenings. That number is down from a year, the last two years, it was 468 who participated. So we did see that number tail off a bit. We did expect that to happen. That's about 50% of the employees that take the insurance. We held those health screenings at every single building, including district office. There were also options to go off-site. So just a brief update on where we're at with the health screenings. And we'll have a report later in the spring, an overall report that comes back from CHC Wellbeing of how those screenings went as a district.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? If not, we'll keep it short and sweet and move on to finance.
Quit dragging it out. Finance Committee, eight dot one payables. We have our purchase orders, accounts payable, impressed, and disbursements listed there. Do we have any questions in regards to those items? If not, we will forward that to the next board meeting for approval. Eight dot two is Revenue and Expenditures Report. Mr. Altmeier.
Thank you very much. You have in front of you the first quarter ending, September 30th, 2019, Financial Executive Summary. We are tracking from both a revenue and expenditure standpoint with budget. So from that overall perspective, no immediate concerns really on any single line item, with the exception of, as we always talk about, health insurance. If you look at page two on your executive summary, we are continuing to trend a little unfavorable to budget. Currently, we're trending at 1.7% unfavorable to budget. Probably the first time in many years that we are trending unfavorable to budget. So we are hoping to see that hopefully turn around this next quarter. So we will continue to monitor the large claims coming in the pipeline. Other than that, if you look at page three of your dashboard, although there are some yellow and red items highlighted there, all items are consistent with prior year and no immediate concerns whatsoever as we are tracking with prior year and budget as expected. So the dashboard is looking fairly good as well. Other than that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have on any other components of the, the report.
Any questions for Mr. Altmeier on his report? Okay. Thank you for that report. Eight dot three, Monthly Fiscal Report Update.
Thank you very much. I think the only thing I really want to talk about is the preliminary EAV. Typically, at this time, we would have presented to the board the preliminary tax levy. And unfortunately, just yesterday, we received the McHenry County estimated EAVs and new construction numbers. So for that reason, we have scheduled the preliminary tax levy. Your first view at the tax levy, you'll see next week at the board meeting. As part of this meeting tonight, you will approve the levy hearing. And we'll talk about that in, in one of the upcoming items. Other than that, this is also the month where generally we talk about the Statement of Annual Affairs. Next month, we would typically ask for a waiver for the Statement of Annual Affairs. But if you do recall, last year, we did receive a three-year waiver of that, the publishing of the Statement of Annual Affairs in the newspaper. So just want to make the board aware of that. We don't want to lose sight of that because we need to go through the process in two more years from now. And then I did want to bring up Senate Bill 1043. In your memo, it says 1064 because, well, that's the old bill number. But it is Senate Bill 1043. And do you want me to wait to talk about that? No, 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 that's, we're going to wait, and we're going to talk about that under the legislative line item. Oh, no, this is your time. I, I, I'm going to let you lead that discussion. It's going to be great. So with that, I'd, I'd like to answer any questions you may have on the monthly fiscal updates.
Is there any, any questions for Mr. Altmeier related to his report? Okay, if not, thank you. Any questions concerning the Activity Fund Report? All right. So we're going to move on to eight dot four. We have a revenue, revenue contracts. I believe there are two of them there to approve. Both for Huntley High School softball, two different vendors. Any questions or concerns regarding those fundraisers? Okay, then we will move those forward to the board for approval. Eight dot five, Levy Hearing. Mr. Altmeier, you have a memo on that?
Correct. And this is just a memo to point out what, you know, in accordance, right, with state code, when is a truth in taxation hearing required? As with several of the, you know, over the past several years, with CPI being as low as it is currently at 1.9% for the 2019 levy, combined with the ballooning of the levy, which we are expecting to do a 1% balloon, which you will see next week. We will not exceed the 105% of prior year's extension, meaning we don't necessarily have to have a levy hearing. But as we have always done, we still hold the levy hearing. We just don't publish the notice for the levy hearing because we're not required to. So this is simply a memo to have the levy hearing date in the month of December, on Thursday, December 19th, for your approval.
Okay. Do we have any questions if he has laid that out? I don't. That's perfectly fine, consistent with how we've done it previously. So we will move that forward to the board for approval. And then eight dot six, we have the PTAB and Board Review Attorney Resolution.
Correct. And we've done this in the past. This is just standard operating procedures that gives our attorney, you know, they need a resolution in hand, something in hand so that when they are arguing on our behalf, they have this.
The authority?
They have the authority to go ahead and do so. So there is an attached resolution asking for your recommendation to approve that and move that resolution forward.
Right. This is Nemec?
Correct.
Yes, Scott Nemec who does this.
That has to be a separate agenda item, though, doesn't it, because of the vote? Can it be on consent? For the resolution?
I think so.
Okay. Then move it forward to the board, not on consent, but then it's a separate item to vote on. And we're all good with that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's what we shall be doing. Eight dots seven, Expansion and Modernization of the Transportation System.
Sure. So you know, last month, we really talked in detail on those. So looking at how we can update and modernize the systems that we have in transportation. There were a couple of questions that had come up, looking at some different options on how we could implement the various systems that we were looking at. One of the main questions that we were looking to go back to see is if we could look at that cost savings component and to kind of identify by using the fleet maintenance part of the software and the information given, were there districts that were able to quantify what down the road did that save in terms of what, you know, the cost is? Sadly, it was really hard for any of them to quantify exactly what that was. Ms. Hooper was able to talk to a few different districts at the countywide directors' meetings that we have learned that have used the software. As you know, we talked to 211, Barrington, a district out in Virginia. A lot of these districts are newly using this. But one of the reoccurring things that they did say was, right, each one of these districts, based on the information that they had received coming from the system, they were able to identify large problems with the bus. Maybe it was with an engine or another component that had they not had this, it would have been a large cost to the district, whether they were going to need to send the bus out or even in terms of maintenance that they would be doing in-house there. And so something reoccurring that we did hear over and over was that information to get in a timely fashion. Because currently, right now, most districts, including ourselves, are waiting to see if there's something odd with the bus waiting to see if there's something odd with the bus or with those routine, you know, checkups. A lot of times, they are not seeing that. But this information in each one of the districts that did use that were noticing that that was something that was beneficial, which they know is going to save them money down the line. But one of the interesting components that, as we were talking to a couple of these different districts, that you'll notice that our recommendation is a little different tonight, is that a few of them were having some concerns with that metal component of the tablets. And it could be, Ms. Hooper, you might have to jump in here on that. There's a little bit with the satellite component of information of having that feed. Sometimes that would stop as they were driving in different areas. It could be where it was off by about two hundred feet. Was that about right? In some locations where if it's telling the driver to turn left, well, that happened, you know, two hundred feet ago. And so there were just some areas with that. And again, that could be a little bit because it is a newer technology of what they're using. But what we're recommending today is that we hold off on that piece a little bit. Dr. Bazinski is working with Tyler Technologies to see, I'll call it a pilot because that's the education term. He'll call it something else for technology. But to see if we could try that on a smaller scale, either in the spring or in the summer, maybe with our summer school routes, maybe with some of our out-of-district routes to see if we can ascertain if those would be some troubleshooting things that we would need to do. Because again, that's the larger cost of the two components there. So what we're recommending tonight is that we would just move forward with phase one, which gives us all of that fleet information as well as the awesome component for the community. They can still get on the My Stop Portal with that component. We don't need the second phase. Our recommendation would be that as we continue to investigate and try to pilot that, that we may want to come back to that. But as we know, technologies change and it might look a little bit different in the future as we move forward with that. But Dr. Bazinski, Ms. Hooper, do you have anything to add with any of the components or information that you've kind of gathered?
So I spent a fair amount of time in the last week or so talking with Tyler Technologies about the idea of, I'm going to call it proof of concept.
There you go.
Because in my role, if we try to pilot something and it doesn't go well, we don't like it.
Crash and burn.
So proof of concept for me. They're very on board and willing to do that sort of a thing. Where we're having ongoing conversations is in terms of what does that look like for the district in cost. Historically, my recommendation would be to enter an agreement for proof of concept where there's, at the end of the day, no cost to us if it doesn't go well. So their stance is, yeah, we're going to provide tablets and service and those sorts of things. From their perspective, they would want to see us purchase those devices. What I'm trying to work out with them is.
We'll rent them until we decide we're going to buy.
Exactly. That's exactly right. It's like, I think that's okay, but if it doesn't turn out the way we think it should, our expectation would be that those devices go back for a refund. We're waiting on some of those discussions back and forth with Tyler. They've been very easy to work with and frankly, they want to move forward with this as well, just as much as we do. So the conversations are a bit slow with them sometimes because they, they're kind of new to these as well. So they are giving us information from these other districts that we're talking to about the delayed satellite times and those sorts of things. And we're getting into the details of what exactly is causing those sorts of things, most of which, from what we're hearing from even those other districts, they're seeing less and less of as time goes on. So they are, in fact, figuring out the updates for the software and those sorts of things as well. But if we're uneasy about it in the accuracy, let's prove it for ourselves before we go forward.
I would absolutely go there, because you're scaring me enough with this, the response time on stuff. So I'm wondering if things aren't going well.
Yeah, no, they've been good where we've, in terms of back and forth with them, because they're having to run things up their chain of command there. Because what we're asking them to do in terms of covering costs is out of their norm.
Yeah.
If we would just agree and say, yeah, we'd pay for the stuff and keep it and all that, we'd be done by now. But because we're asking them to step out of their norm, it's additional conversation.
And what's interesting about the research that, you know, Chris and Jessica have done, and I appreciate that very much, is not too far from here, in two separate locations, is where very different experiences took place. McHenry was having some difficulty with the cellular response time and where it was telling the buses to turn, whereas in Barrington, Dr. Harris said they know of zero issues that they've had whatsoever. Today, at the Lake of the Hills Algonquin Chamber, we heard that 5G is something that's in process and is a couple of years away from being completed, which will enhance all aspects of cellular service and internet speed. So I really think that ultimately through your conservative approach to this, it's pushed us to come up with the best solution that'll be better for all of us along the way.
So if you look at, with the two different phases, phase one is that Tyler Telematics, GPS and on-screen software, then the My Stop Portal, which we would still look at getting all that installed and the training and the components there between now and February. But then that information coming to the transportation department, a lot of training would be had for both our mechanics as well as the kind of front office staff. That information actually wasn't till today. I kind of, as I was looking at that, as we're modernizing this, is very similar to what we did with the evaluation system. Everything's paper pencil right now. But being able to put that now in computers, how fast we'd be able to get the information, diagnose it, and, you know, look at the different data components there. So the initial hardware cost was forty-seven thousand nine fifty-nine with the annual service cost of thirty-seven nine ten. And then looking at getting everything in place, hopefully, Chris, I forget what you called it, but with that pilot sometime in the proof of concept into the summer, and then hopefully getting that onboard in August for the parent component of that. So our recommendation right now is to look, to move forward with the contract. I know that Mr. Altmeier has looked at how that is able to be put into the budget with a total cost for the initial year of eighty-five thousand eight sixty-nine, and then the annual cost would be the thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten before the reimbursement, the transportation reimbursement component.
Right. We think that's like sixty percent, sixty-ish percent, right? Okay. So forty-ish is out of our pocket ultimately. There is a delay here, delay lag on the reimbursement of it. Okay. Couple of things to help frame the discussion. The average light, average age of our bus fleet right now is what?
Between eight and nine.
Right. And our expectation of how long we will generally keep most of our buses, is it usually like ten to twelve?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I think it's important to keep that frame of reference as to why this might be a helpful item is because we aren't turning over our buses very quickly. We are keeping them, maintaining them. So I think that it's an important factor in it. My next question would be in regards to the amount of subs on routes. How often are we using substitute bus drivers?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, as a percentage every day, how, I mean, is ten percent of our drivers out there every day sub? Is that inaccurate?
We.
I'm guessing, so I don't know.
Laura, how many in-house, we have full-time sub drivers. We have ten, and they're utilized every day. And then we have the on-call subs as well.
Along with like our preschool drivers that in the afternoon, after they're done with their preschools, we use all ten of them as subs as well in the afternoon because it works for their schedules.
Okay. Right. So they're only going to benefit from this Tyler Drive piece of this. So that's the part we're going to test out potentially here if we go forward. So what other questions do others have in regards to this?
I mean, from my own perspective, I'm pretty clear on what's put forth here, and I think it makes a lot of sense. So, you know, it gets prioritized appropriately based on cost and need. And so I'm generally for it.
Yeah. Mark, if average age of the buses are eight, nine years, we get ten to twelve years out of them, is it possible to get an extra year out of our buses if we go to this? Or is that too hard to even quantify at this point?
It's probably too hard to quantify. I mean, we could always get an extra year. You know, our buses go up to two hundred thousand miles on a diesel bus. And it's really not about the engines. It's about everything else on the bus, you know, failing after nine or ten years of salt and. Right. And what they're being put through. So, you know, with some of the new buses that we have today, and I'd probably defer to Ms. Hooper, with some of the new buses that we've been purchasing over the last five to six years, I would ask her and her maintenance team, how have they been holding up? Can we get another five or six years out of that bus? And we could probably get that answer pretty quickly unless you already have that in hand.
Yeah. I see the better that they've been made the last couple of years. They've been manufactured a little bit better. The engines are much better. If we stay with the ICs that we have been, they've been very good as far as maintenance-wise. The older the fleet gets, Mr. Altmeier is right, it's not the engine, it's the body that fails on it. It's just, it's, at some point, you just, it falls apart. And they can't repair as much as they would like to.
So these devices are really aren't going to extend life of those components?
No.
Because those are really, it's really more mechanical and that sort of thing.
Correct. But when we're looking at a seven, eight, nine-year bus with ninety thousand miles, there are failures.
Yeah.
And if they could prevent an engine failure or a significant material failure, just one or two of those can really.
It's more about the big-ticket cost that is preventing.
What I'm getting at, I think you can tell, is that, you know, if we can, if we can eke out some extra life mechanically from these things because we were able to find some, something wrong with it ahead of time, as Ms. Almbaer had mentioned, that one of the districts that you talked to kind of hinted at that, that would be, then this would be even more economically feasible for us.
Correct. And I think that's the attractive piece, really, for that piece of the Tyler technology.
Okay. Any other members of the board, do they have any questions that they'd like to ask?
Yeah, I have one. The tablet technology, that's all cellular-based?
Yes. Yeah, the data transmission to the tablet devices is primarily cellular-based, yes. But it does have GPS tracking location for actually placing the bus on the map.
Okay.
And tracking that as it goes. But in terms of data transmission, it is all cellular.
So map-wise, if there's information going back and forth?
Correct.
I'm, because I, having worked in that industry for a while, I could see where if there's a coverage hole where that RF signal doesn't get to a certain location or part of the town or village.
Right. To a certain extent, the map data itself is stored locally on the device.
Okay.
It's the actual placement of the bus icon on the map that sometimes gets a little off.
Fuzzy.
So, but the actual map data itself is generally stored locally and accessed and verified on the device when the driver logs into the route, to make sure that that's all stored locally. So the turn-by-turn stuff is there. It's the pinpoint location of the actual bus at any given time that sometimes we're hearing is off.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? No. Okay. So Mike, where you at? You good?
Yeah.
Kevin, I heard you're good. I'm good also. So we will, and I'm actually real good with the approach of, you know, testing out the other piece of it. So that's great. So we will move that forward to the board as presented here. And we're on the building in grounds.
Troy, thank you. Item nine dot one, O and M updates. Mr. Rinkosik.
Good evening. O and M updates. Exciting news. After working on the solar project since issuing an RFP in March of two thousand and eighteen, we finally have building permits in process. I had a review with the Regional Office of Education where I presented them all the builder zoning review and public works engineering review, the construction documents, and all approved. So the word is from Forefront Power that they, their goal is to start putting fence in around the perimeter of where the array installations will be next week, and that driving of posts into the ground would start the following week. So that's exciting news. They didn't talk about update on the delivery date, but they are going to start developing a schedule. And I may just develop, just like I do other construction project updates, put another update together, possibly, or just shove it in here. But you should see a schedule regularly to give you an indication of where it's tracking. Been very busy time in the O and M office with some other things as well. We've, we're out to bid for a couple of projects that you're already aware of, I think. Two roof top unit replacements at McCaven that were part of the summer project list. Issued the bid spec for the stage curtains rebid that was rejected at the time the high school addition project was put together. Very soon to be issuing another bid spec, part of the annual projects list again for some boiler plant makeup air unit preheat system installations at Conley Elementary School. And we've got another project that's about on the drawing board for releasing pretty soon, too, for payment improvements and some sprinklehead replacements, all part of the annual list. So it's a very busy time. I will tell you also, we spent a large chunks of the last couple of days with our smart energy management coach, the Cohart coach. Yesterday, we met with the NICOR assessment team. They blocked all our buildings. You'll see the report next month. It was too late when we got it yesterday to incorporate it into this report. I apologize. But the good news is, they basically said that there's not much to look at. We're doing a good job. So I was glad to get that affirmation. There is a couple of things that Mr. Reed and I will talk about in food service, that there seems to be a bit of an interest ideas that we might be able to potentially look at. Some opportunities, I will caution you, there are estimates of cost. Sometimes we pick it apart and find it isn't necessarily, you know, exactly what it might cost us because of how our operations work. But we will be evaluating the opportunities I identified. Today, we spent several hours meeting with the team that has been helping us look into our building automation system. I don't know if you heard, but we did some years ago, take some preliminary evaluations of the concept of having an energy manager brought in on a full-time basis as a potential energy savings opportunity. At that point in time, that failed. But this was a similar kind of a process and a very micro exercise, looking at a building and HVAC equipment in a building. We have been finding some, like repair-type problems where we've had some control issues that we're able to tweak and gain a little bit of energy savings. We also saw a preliminary report on what our partner Clear Results is saying. They identified what we've been saving on energy since we started joining the Cohart. And it's a recognizable substantial dollars. Hopefully, we'll have more information graphical form and things for you at the next report. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board or the committee? All right. Thank you for that report. And then one more report. Huntley High School Fine Arts Construction Updates.
Well, if you've driven out to the high school lately, you may notice that there's some masonry walls sticking out of the ground now. The south wall of the black box is up. That is not the wall of the actual, can I use the word theater section? It's, there's a little bit of the storage space and some infrastructure room, rooms that are there. But that's the exterior wall of that part of the building. Weather has not been cooperative on the west wall, but we're looking for it to warm up a little. Several procurement pieces I'm working on in the background, a part of what the district was going to provide, it's line items near the bottom of the page, are still being worked on. It's my goal that hopefully in thirty days or so, that I'll have a package of things to bring to you for things like this, the theater lighting, theater sound and visual, music locker procurement.
for things like this, the theater lighting, theater sound, and visual, music locker procurement, and security. But we're getting real close. We're trying to get that all together as one package of items to bring to you at one time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Comments from the board or questions? All right, and that's it for O and M Updates, Legislative Committee.
Pass it over to Ms. Malendi.
I just want to update the board on the Mark Almeyer PTEL bill. It was, was it last week? This bill has been stuck in rules in the House. It passed through the Senate, just as a reminder, over in the House. It was, been in rules. It was kicked out of rules last week into a committee. And Mr. Almeyer will be in Springfield with me next week to testify in front of the House Committee. There was an amendment added to it by the McHenry County Board Chair, so that should not affect the integrity of our bill at all, correct? So, hopefully, so...
What was the purpose of that?
What was the purpose of the amendment?
Yeah.
You want me to explain it from what I, from what I gather after reading several of the amendments? It, it is, it's an abatement bill. It's a PTAB. It's part of PTEL, excuse me, not PTAB, which allows taxing bodies, taxing districts under PTEL, to abate tax dollars. And essentially gives, gives that taxing district an opportunity to not lose those dollars forever.
Permanently, okay.
Permanently, which is a good bill. So, there's a lot of districts that have significant fund balance that don't want to abate because they don't have debt. And that's McHenry County, for example.
Yeah, okay, I, I understand.
It's actually...
And I understand the situation.
So, that, so that...
I didn't know that's what we were going on.
Right, so that was a recent add, fairly recently. But like I said, that should not affect what we are intending for the bill to do. So, our hope is that that passes through veto session next week, and we can put that to bed.
Correct.
And this, this benefits not only our school district, but all the school districts and all the taxing bodies in the state. So, this is a good bill for everyone. So, hopefully, Mark will be able to explain it to the House Committee, and they'll understand and it'll, it'll go through.
Yeah, and there, there are several members, there are ten or twelve members of the committee for which I've already spoken to several of those members on the phone, kind of walking them through the bill and, and obtaining their support. So, we're already laying the groundwork before I even, before we even are down there next week on Tuesday for, for that committee hearing, so.
Right.
All is looking good so far.
Anything else on legislative, Ms. Malendi? Okay, I have nothing else. Then we will move on to Ms. Malendi for community outreach.
Okay, community relations and outreach, eleven dot one, annual report. We have the annual report pulled up there. Mr. Almeyer, I just want to say before you start this, oh, I'm sorry. I've been working with this guy all week, so...
That's a compliment, Dan.
I do want to, I do want to compliment Mr. Armstrong, though, not Mr. Almeyer, on the annual report. I think it's a good report, and it has a lot of really valuable and meaningful information in it this year, so, nice job.
I'll be very brief. I won't go through the whole thing. But I will say that this project is always a lot of fun for me to work on, but it's also extremely challenging. And I don't say that from a design standpoint or anything, because I try to keep it pretty simple. But it's really, the challenge every year is to fit in all the great stuff that's going on. Just a quick list. When you're featured as the number-one blended learning program in the US by a leading national education website, when you have one teacher named National Teacher of the Year by a leading organization in its field, the Braylon Institute, another teacher named National Teacher of the Year in one subject area, and statewide Teacher of the Year in another field, when you introduce band and orchestra in fifth grade, a new special focused on STEM, when you have a successful dual-language rollout, when you introduce a new concerted focus on equity and social-emotional learning, bring campus resource officers to all of our campuses, when you launch statewide-leading solar energy project, when you launch incubator at the high school, when your foundation introduces a new mega-successful fundraiser that's become a community favorite event, when your entire district is focused by the state, featured by the State Board of Education in its new Best Practices Case Studies Resource Website, when you launch a new competency-based education pilot program, when you're invited to present at a number of statewide and national conferences, when you're regularly featured in national and industry media, and when you're doing all that just in the past year, while remaining the number-two lowest-spending large-unit district in the eleven-county Chicago area, that's quite a story to tell, and it's very difficult to fit all that in. So, my hope with this is that residents and, and members of the community who don't pay attention necessarily to the day-to-day stuff that's going on here, I hope this gives them just a taste of all the great stuff that's going on. And then, of course, I hope that they go to the website and sign up for our e-newsletters and all the other ways that we communicate out to the community throughout the year. And hopefully, this is just a little eye-catching taste for them to, to get acclimated with all of that great stuff that's going on.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anyone? No?
So, this will be going to the printer very soon and mailed out in a week or two, probably.
Great, thank you. Nice job.
Excellent job, Mr. Armstrong.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to twelve, Board of Education, Mr. Pluck.
Okay. We have the twelve point one, the meeting minutes. Is there any questions or comments on meeting minutes? Otherwise, we will move that forward. All right, there being nothing, move on to twelve point two. Twenty nineteen Delegate Assembly. We sent out the spreadsheet for people to cast their position on the various resolutions. Some of you haven't had a chance to put those in. So, we do need to talk about that. We do need to nominate a delegate for the assembly. So, the way we do this is we go through the various resolutions. We state our position. If it's unanimous, or there's one vote against in one way or another, that will be the position that we will have our delegate vote at the assembly. There are a couple, we've got five of the seven members have cast their votes. So, I don't know how we want to proceed on that for some of these. No, we, we've had open debate on this. This, this is open debate. Last year, we had very, very open debate on one of the resolutions. So, no, this is, this is open. So, no, okay. So, no, that's okay. This is, this is new, so, for you, so, I understand. Okay, so, why don't we just go through these? Let's make it easy and knock off the ones that are already five oh, unless our two other voters swing it the other way. Okay, so I'll skip, I'll skip resolution number one for now. And for the public, we should probably go through what these resolutions are. First one is related to student safety. It's a modification of last year's resolution regarding having districts be able to, under certain circumstances, have the ability to arm highly-trained and qualified staff to carry arms to prevent any kind of shooting in the, in the area. So, we're going to hold off on that one. The others, number two is business enterprises regarding minority-owned. Looks like we've got everybody that's cast their vote opposed to that. Do either of you, what, that haven't weighed in yet? Do you want to comment on that? No comment? My Reno Shively, yeah? Support or oppose on that? Okay, so, everybody's opposed on that. Okay? Okay, I'll change that vote to zero seven.
Real-time updates on the screen.
Yes, okay. Number three is a school safety grant program. Right now, the vote on that one is five to zero in support. Quaglioano, go with it? Okay, that's a seven oh. Next one is regarding a school district police force resolution. Do you support that? Okay, so that's seven oh.
A side comment, that was a very interesting concept. I had not heard that one before.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Next is background checks for substitute teachers resolution. We've got five oh in support. Okay, now it's seven oh. Next resolution is on school safety in traffic zones. That's five oh in support. Yeah. Do you support that as well? Okay, so that's seven oh. Next one is on school board elections, seating of new members. Something really applied to us, I think, but, yeah, we're all in support of that. And that's a seven oh. Okay, now we've got swearing in. This resolution is kind of related to who may do, who may give the oath. And we've always had the oath given by the board president, but I think some districts have an issue where they don't always have that for timing purposes or something on availability. I didn't, I didn't quite understand it. But we are opposed except for one, so, any thoughts on that? Okay, well... Yeah, if it recommends do not adopt, what, what we're doing is not, we're opposing the resolution as written. Okay, so... Yes, okay. Nobody's, now that Mr. Garen is now opposing. All right, so that's now unanimous. Worked so easy. School board elections regarding terms. Mr. Troy is opposed. We have Tony here. Mostly, do you have any thoughts on that one? Okay. Mr. Troy, do you feel very strongly? You want to... Okay, all right. Well, that'll come, that'll come in as six one, so that, that'll be our position on that to support. Number ten is school board member compensation. Right now, it's, it's one in support of the resolution, four opposed. You oppose? Okay. Mr. Tony? Okay, so then, then you're opposing it, okay? So, that'll be our position on that one. Charter school issues, renewal of charters. Right now, we've got, anybody in support of that? Shively, okay? That will be unanimous. And finally, charter school regarding at-risk students. Everybody's in support of that? Okay, now, the rest of them are amended and reaffirmation of existing resolutions regarding prevailing wage, et cetera. Right now, they're five oh. If you guys are in support of them, then we don't have to talk about them. We can really... Okay, let's go back to number one then on student safety. Mr. Quaglioano, Ms. My Reno Shively, if you guys want to state your position, then we can have our discussion. Do you support? Okay. Okay, so that's five two. But I do want to allow those who oppose, Troy, Mr. Gentry, if you feel like you want to advocate your position, please do.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the... Where to start? There, there is a need, I think, in the right situation to have the right person appropriately armed as a defense for, defense, for defenseless students. What I have to look at is through a lens of, like, this board. Like, the argument for is always, hey, it's a local control, looking downstate. There's a rural school district. That's a, that's the most compelling reason in support of it. But I think I still had to come back and look through the lens of this, this board, this district, and how I would feel as a parent. And I think when you think about the practicalities of it, are you going to identify who is armed versus who's not armed? And don't parents need and have the right to know who is and who is not? And if you do that, you introduce an element of unintended consequences around having a, an armed person who is identified as armed and, you know, their intentions, their actions, as well as students' actions and their interactions that could lead to situations where you have very bad things happen. And as I, again, as a parent, in thinking about this district, I trust this board to make those right decisions, but even in this district, I don't know future boards. And based on that view, I would rather be, be in support of some of these other, I think, I forget what number it was, but beef-up actions to fund resource officers in school districts across the state.
Troy, do you have any comments? For me, the, the acid test on this one, or not the acid test, the, the attempt to pass this a second time was a little bit closer to palatable for me. But in the end, I also looked at it as a parent. As a parent, if there is a concealed weapon in the classroom for my kids, then I would demand to know that it's there. I would want my, I want to know that my kids are in a classroom in the presence of that kind of weapon. And if that's the case, I could see where parents will also make an argument to say, put my kid in a classroom where that concealed weapon is not present because I don't want my kids in the presence of something like that. And so, now, it opens up, I think, an unintended consequence where now you're shuffling kids to meet the requests of parents or demands of parents. And, and I, I couldn't put myself, bring myself across that threshold to say that I, I support this measure. I, I, I like the idea of, of funding, as Mr. Gentry said, a, a resource officer having a grant program for that to try and stave off some of this. But I, I, I couldn't, I didn't in good conscience support it last year. I still can't support it in good conscience this year.
I'm going to just clarify. I, I agree a hundred percent with what both of you have said. And again, I, the only reason I support it is I would never support it for this district, okay, in a million years. But I do support the fact that people might need to make a decision in a different place. And I, I, I support giving them that right to make that decision. And that's my chief thing with going through with the support of it is, I'll let others make that decision what's best for their district. I don't want to take that choice away from them. I didn't, they should have that choice, but I, I would never in a million years allow... in this district, so...
Anyone else? I, I want to weigh in, because I, I agree with Tony on this. And I, although I'm a strong advocate of those rights for most people, I, as a board member, would not support that to be the decision of, or the policy of this board to allow for it either because, uh, we are in a situation where I don't think we really need that. We have resource officers. We have our, uh, first responders much closer to our district buildings than a lot of districts down south have. Um, last year, I heard a lot of conversation from some of these districts where it truly is thirty, forty-five minutes, maybe an hour before a first responder will ever get to the district building if something happened. So it's, it's, comes down to, uh, it does come down to local control for me. And, um, that isn't a support for, uh, and it's not mandating that all districts have anybody in there at all. This is not what this is about. This is about giving those districts that need this sort of, uh, issue in addition to other safety measures that are out there, the opportunity to be able to solve their problem the way they need to. So that's why I'm in support of it. Uh, has anybody changed their position on this? Do we need to revote? Okay. Then that will be five to two. And, uh, we will, uh, that will be the position of this district. So I think we've answered all of the resolutions. Uh, thank you for your input and your comments, um, and your taking a good look at all of these resolutions. Uh, just so the public knows, these resolutions aren't law. Um, they are, they are positions that the Illinois, uh, Association, the Illinois Association of School Boards will take and advocate for passage of legislation that would support these resolutions. So it's really just an advocacy position and, and it is not law at all. Uh, I want, I want to make sure the public understands that. Uh, we do need to have a delegate, um, attend the, uh, delegation assembly, um, at the, uh, Illinois Association of School Boards. And I do want to, and we'll, we'll take formal action on this next week, but I do want to, uh, uh, move that Paul Troy, if he's willing to do so, uh, be the delegate. I haven't talked to you about it. The look on your face is as shocked as I think everybody else, but...
I'm good with that.
Okay. And this, uh, okay. So I don't think we can take formal action in the committee, the whole meeting on that, can we? So we'll do that, we'll do that at the next meeting, but we'll make that, we'll make that formal next time. Okay? Thank you for doing that, Paul. Okay. Uh, that being said, uh, I think we have fulfilled everything in the open session. So it is seven fifty-one. I want to make, uh, a motion to go into a closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Malendi. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Myerino? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Malendi? Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you.
Mrs. Hoiu?